Madam Clerk, good evening. I'd like to call the August 19th, 2021 City Commission Workshop to order. I'm asking the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Betty Rash?
Here.
Oh, that's gonna be fun.
Good evening. I'd like to call the August 19th, 2021 City Commission Workshop to order. I'm asking the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Betty Rash?
Here.
Vice Mayor Herman Robinson? Commissioner Sarah Maliga?
Here.
Commissioner Christopher McBoy?
Here.
Commissioner Kimberly Stokes?
Here.
Thank you very much. We're gonna have the Please rise to the pledge led by Commissioner McBoy. Thank you. I want to start out tonight. I had every intention of coming personally today, and I very much apologize for that. As some of you know, I've been horribly sick for a few days, and I thought rather than risk everyone, I've been tested, but I'm gonna get tested again tomorrow. A few notes I just want to make for, you know, what tonight is. Tonight, we are listening to presentations by the Gills about Gulfstream, and then we are going to have public comment. There's going to be three phases of public comment. There are people there in person. Those people will go first. After they're done, the people who are trying to, who want to comment on Zoom will be next, and the last will be the people who have sent in comments to be read. We have, as my understanding, at least 70 comments to be read, so it's gonna be a long night. I want to emphasize that there will be no response from the commission tonight. This is just merely for listening to what the folks have to say after the presentation is made. And I want to remind everyone that the Gills, the Gulfstream people, have put up a website where you have the opportunity personally to respond to them, to ask them questions, to make comments. So this is not the only opportunity you'll have. I also want to point out that this is the first of at least two of these workshops. This is really just not, just really today to have the citizen input. So, as far as that goes, that's gonna be, so it's gonna be in-person first, Zoom second, and then our intrepid clerk will be reading the comments. I am going to hang in as long as I can. At some point, I may have to cut out and turn the gavel over to Commissioner, to Vice Mayor Robinson, and I appreciate your patience with this. So, having said that, do we have any Madam Clerk, do we have any updates or, you know, what's our, what are we doing tonight?
No, I believe they're gonna start with presentations. There are three presentations.
Okay.
One by staff, one by the Gills, and one regarding parking.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna turn this all over to the folks who are live in person. And Mr. and Mrs. Gill, I apologize for not being there in person. I had every intent to be there, but it was not meant to be. I think this was the safest way to handle it tonight. So thank you very much. I'm gonna silence myself now, and let's start.
Madam Mayor, if I may really quick, city manager Juan Ruiz.
Yep.
I wanted to go ahead and introduce Mr. Gill and our guests and attendants really quick before we start.
Sure.
Presentations, but as you just mentioned, here with us tonight at the workshop is Amrin Amy Gill, representing Restoration St. Louis, and also Mr. Bill Nomo and Mr. Cunningham, representing CDS Holdings. And as we all remember, they are the two partners in this project. And just want to thank them again for making themselves available to come and join us and have a conversation or an update per se, and and we look forward to it. So with no further ado, Mr. Gill, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really quick, Darian, the view for the viewer at home, is it better for the presenters to walk the floor or to remain seated? Seated? Okay, you got it. Thank you, sir.
And if we could focus in on them while they're speaking, that would be helpful. Who's ever speaking, if we could actually see them, that would be great.
Okay, so just a quick overview of the current plan process. We submitted a proposal last year, the proposed plan, and we spent the next six months after that listening, just meeting with city staff, with multiple one-on-one meetings with each commissioner, as well as, you know, meeting with commissioners, public workshop meetings, discussion with downtown business owners, a number of them, and lots of dialogue with residents via letter, email, phone, and also in person. Based on all that feedback, we prepared alterations to the original plan. So, to begin with, obviously, I think we're all on the same team in terms of having our interests aligned. We want the Gulfstream preserved, restored, operating as a hotel with all the amenities befitting a viable, long-lasting hotel. This community deserves nothing but the best when it comes to the Gulfstream being restored. So given all that, what goes into it? In order to get long-lasting sustainability, we have to do a number of things. Why does the proposed project look like it does? One of the questions we've been asked by a number of people is, why can't it be small? Well, the rehabilitation cost cannot be supported by a smaller hotel. That's why it closed. That's why it hasn't been redeveloped. There are a number of reasons why historic renovations cost a lot more than new construction. But suffice it to say that the cost of renovating the historic building is more than double what it costs to build a new building. So this this slide kind of gives you an idea of, you know, you have the tip of the iceberg, and then you have all the things that are driving the design and the programming that are beneath the surface. So, it's all a balancing act. We have a lender, we have city codes we have to meet, we have we have Marriott Tribute Portfolio Design Requirements, we have historic requirements, we have the standards of Secretary of the Interior, we have market demands. So we have to balance all those things. And I think the slide speaks for itself, so I'm not gonna read it out, but these are the reasons why the program looks the way it does. Does everybody have a copy of this? So to stay in business for the long term, the hotel needs really strong economic fundamentals. Amy and I don't do projects that are supposed to last for five or seven years, get our developer fee, and then leave. We operate for the long term, and we build projects to be we build projects that strengthen and enhance the communities that we operate in for the long term, not for the short. What do these extras look like in some of our current projects? You can see the spa, the pool, fitness centers, restaurants, apartments, ballrooms. Each one of our hotel has a different mix based on what the local market demands are and what the flag requirements are. So, another extra. The beach, the hotel's not on the beach. People coming to the hotel are going to want to go to the beach. We're gonna have trolleys. Now, obviously, this is a trolley for a different hotel, but we'll have multiple trolleys that basically provide the same function, which is to get our guests to the beach, as well as for our staff to use for any off-site parking requirements that we'll have in order to make sure that the staff can get to and from work easily. So I'm gonna let Amy talk about the design.
So, one of the things that we keep getting asked is, why is the design the way it is? Right? Well, first of all, everybody says, whoa, can you do the arches, for example? But federal historic requirements do not allow the new building to mimic the existing hotel. We've actually done a building that had arches that we were not allowed to build arches on in addition because they were too close to what the existing hotel looked like. So I want to be clear that there are reams and reams of federal historic guidelines that we do have to follow, and anyone can look on the Secretary of the Interior's standards, and you can see hundreds and thousands of projects that have been done and why they specify it the way they do. So feel free, they love it when you're on their website, honestly. The project height is necessary to accommodate the necessary programs on the site. We keep getting asked about height. We have done and have discussed, for example, pushing the building forward up next to the Gulfstream, forward towards Lake Avenue, but when we do that, we've gotten pushback from the neighbors on not being so close to Lake Avenue, and everybody seeing the historic building as you drive down the street. We would love to have direction from the city on what you would prefer, because we can do a building that steps down in the back, but we then have to get closer to Lake Avenue, right? So we've had these discussions. We were told the city prefers the setback. They prefer that people only see the Gulfstream as they drive up. So we would like feedback. That is something that we keep asking for, but we need solid feedback from the commission on what is actually necessary. But it also has to be financially, it has to be a financial decision as well, right? You can't say, well, we would like you to do a two-story building, and you know, we don't care whether it ever makes money, because that's not how life works, honestly. So would love to get feedback that is solid from the commission on items like this in order to make sure that we are meeting all your expectations.
And a lot of the feedback from the residents was that they wanted to see the historic building and have the new construction subservient. So we heard that from a lot of people, including commissioners, which is why we came up with the 55-foot setback in this design, which you'll see shortly.
So, there's not enough space in the historic hotel for a modern kitchen, back-up house. A hotel needs a lot of back-up house things. They need things like laundry areas, which there's nothing there now. They need things like a modern kitchen. We have to meet code for ADA. There's a lot of things that go into taking up additional room, both in the historic hotel, which reduces the amount of rooms, but also in the new part of the hotel. Parking structure is required to meet code, as we all know. We need dedicated access between the historic and the new construction portions, because you don't want to come to this beautiful, glorious historic hotel and not have a way to get next to your rooms, right? We were told that there was a desire to keep alley access for adjacent condos, so we have accommodated for that. We believe in a good way. We've given circulation diagrams. We are open. We heard a little bit from the neighbors. They don't want it to be two-way. They want it to be one-way. We're happy to work with them to get it the way they want it. We've asked for feedback. We haven't received any feedback from the neighbors since the conversation. And then also access ADA, city codes, guest satisfaction, Marriott requirements. Marriott's very stringent on their requirements, both on the design side and on the life safety and just general project side. So that has a lot to do with it. And then I think the big thing is, we're happy to work with the city on the construction and on making a building that you're happy with, but it has to be balanced by the revenue that we get. So as long as we're all good on that, I believe that this listening session should be really productive, because it should be about how do we get a win-win from everyone. So what comments have we addressed so far? So the comments we got were, they wanted it set back from Lake. So we set it back from Lake, so the historic hotel is dramatically more prominent. We give a larger recess area on the east side to reflect similarities with the historic building. We've added a green roof and cut out of the building, reducing the visual impact to the east. And also, we had some feedback from the condo owners that they were concerned about their building, and that lower portion requires a lot less structural impact, a lot less structural work. So that lower portion would allow us to do spread footings and not so many augured tiles, and that, of course, will hopefully allay their concerns. We've changed balcony materials and separations to better reflect the historic nature of the neighborhood, based on feedback from the city. Changed the building exterior material to less glass, more building, based on feedback from the city. Revised window and door openings to be compatible with the predominant features of the historic hotel, based on feedback from the city. Setback, pulled forward portions along Lakeside Drive, so that it looks more like multiple buildings rather than one continuous building face by using various elevations and colors to visually mirror existing downtown streetscapes. We added 40 additional garage spaces. We believe that there is a way to add 40 more, and we have been discussing that with the city planning department. Address ingress and egress paths for garage. No traffic patterns on First Avenue or in the south of Gulfview or Lakeside Drive. In order to reduce any traffic going down in front of all the residences and background owners, all of that, we believe we've addressed in our parking diagram. So
Which we can continue to refine, obviously.
Yes. This is, what we were directed was that they did not want to be able to see the new building. They wanted to see the Gulfstream. If you look at this diagram, you can see that a person standing down the street as they're coming up would not be able to see, they would only see the old Gulfstream and not the new building. So all the way down, yeah, all the way down to where you get to Lake would be when you would be able to see it. And you would see the existing Gulfstream, as you can see in the kind of little drop dive from Google. You can see the existing hotel, but not any of the new build. Incorporating comments from the city and the public, Gulfstream project proposed plan has been revised to decrease the impact of the new building relative to the historic building, increase setback, increase green space by recessing new construction, including the connection to the historic building 55 feet from Lake, and then, of course, implementation of the new building materials. And as you can see, the old drawing showed a lot of glass, it's very modern, very distinct from the Gulfstream and the historic hotel. Now, the new project proposal has, instead of arched breezeway, it has squared breezeway, which we believe we can do with historic, and it provides a similar feeling to the old Gulfstream in that you have that breezeway, you have that kind of entry focal point, but it is subservient to the more glamorous historic Gulfstream. We also, and I don't think you can tell from this, that the whole center portion of this building is recessed in order to mimic the historic Gulfstream, so that the two have basically a three-faceted frontage, and the new building would have a three-faceted frontage, so that they would be similar to each other. And then incorporating comments from the city on the west facade, we use balcony materials and separation that better reflect the historic nature of the neighborhood. If you want to just move to the slide, I think maybe just talking about it. So the old west facade, as you can see, was a lot of glass. It was very clear where the parking garage was. It was very clear where, you know, excuse me, where all the pieces were, if you will. Now, in the new proposed design, we've continued that breezeway around the side. We've continued the look of a breezeway all the way through the garage, which will, all of those openings will be recessed, and they'll all have concrete up to the point where cars can pull in and no lights will shine out of the garage. So it'll look like one continuous breezeway across the facade of the building. And then there are portions of the building that are recessed at different levels, so that the building itself looks like multiple different buildings. We've even discussed with city planning that we could do those portions in different colors to make them look even more like broken up different buildings. These are the streetscapes that we were pointed to within Lake Worth Beach as examples of things that could be used, the ideas that could be acceptable for inspiration. So those are all different ideas that we played off of to do the new facade. So, on parking, the Gulfstream project is investing in the parking structure, obviously, so that we can provide for all the needs of the building within our parking. The proposed plan calls for 235 to 245 parking spaces provided within the structure. We believe that we can get another 38 to 40, based on commentary from the city, and that should cover us from a parking perspective. It's been designed to retain traffic away from the alley and to make sure that we're not going behind any of the condos. It'll take them in on Lakeside Drive, into our garage, and then out the back of our garage, across the newly created portion of the alley, and out onto Gulfview. The condo, if you can see in the diagram, our guests would be the people in blue. The condo owners would be in orange, and the, like, large delivery vehicles would be in pink. We believe that this way we will reduce any, for example, large trucks from coming down the alley or from bothering any of the residents in the neighborhood. It'll keep all of our guests from basically interacting with the neighborhood in a vehicle, and also making sure that the condos have appropriate access to their parking.
And obviously, we are open to comment, and, you know, we would love to work with everybody to make sure that we have the least amount of impact on residential southern part of this.
We are not requesting any off-site parking anywhere near this project. We have had a few discussions with the city about employee parking on either lots that the city owns or lots the private developers own that we can rent, but we have not had any discussion with the city on taking any parking along Bryant Park, near the golf course, or anything like that. I want to make that really clear. We anticipate that we will be able to cover our bases within our project, particularly because it's a valeted project. So our valets will park the cars, and if you know about valet, you know that you can sometimes get almost twice as many cars into a valet garage as you can into a regular garage. And so
Double parking the cars, because we have the keys to all the cars.
Right. So we believe that we'll be able to get over 400 valet parked cars within the garage. So, just so you, so we can give everybody perspective on that, that's more than the project we're even with our employees. So I think that's the end of our presentation. We are here to listen. We are here to have, you know, listen to everybody's comments and try to make sure that this is a win-win for everybody and make it something that everybody's really proud of.
Thank you, Amrin and Amy. Mayor, if you're still on, Madam Mayor Madam Attorney, I don't recall if Mayor actually passed the gavel just yet.
Not yet.
Okay, so the meeting is at your pleasure, Madam Mayor. So if you'd like to continue, at this point, we can enter into public comment, or if you so choose to allow your fellow elected officials maybe to have a minute or two to provide any comment, and we can move on with the meeting.
So we're gonna do this after each presentation?
If you'd like.
Sure, let's do that. Why don't we have if it's the commission's pleasure to have like a three-minute comment, and then start the live people coming in? How does that sound?
So, are we gonna be able to comment now? Is that what you're saying?
Right. What I'm saying is if each, I would think, because this is a huge volume. There are about 70 cards to be read, so this is gonna be a monster. So if you want, I was thinking if we want to have something, like if you each have three minutes to give comments after each presentation, we can have that, I'm sure.
Madam Mayor, there are two other presentations that are before us. Do you want us to listen to those first?
Well, I'm thinking while it's fresh in their minds, you might want to comment, and then after each presentation, do another three minutes.
Perfect. So each commissioner will be able to comment after each presentation, but are we gonna hold public comment till the end?
That was my understanding.
And I think our comments should be now, and we can either not be affected by public comment, and I
That's why I'm suggesting it.
And I want the public to understand, you know, where we're coming from now.
Right.
So
That's my suggestion.
Okay. This public meeting is fantastic. This is what we
I can't hear him.
We all know that
I can't, I can't hear him. Excuse me, Vice Mayor. I can't hear you, and I don't know if anybody else can.
Audio is not working. The mayor can't hear us. Testing one, two. Can you hear us?
I can hear that.
Can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay, I guess we're back on.
Sorry, I was just trying to My enthusiasm for the project is what I would say. And I'm glad to see the trolley, and I also hope that we can see it downtown as much as the beach. The setback, I may be the odd man out here, but I really am not pleased with the setback of 55 feet. It's contrary to our major survey guidelines. It's our most valuable real estate in the county, I'm gonna say. And to not build on it is just, I don't understand. I can appreciate your trying to please everybody, but I can guarantee you that 25% of the population isn't gonna be pleased with anything. There's probably quite a few other people that will never be pleased, but I just think that the setback, to see a wall of windows on the old building is we can step it back, but to not build on 55 feet means that there's a loss of your income. It's, you're gonna have to make that up somewhere, and I want this project to be the most most attractive project it can be. So I am really hoping that you will consider something very much closer to Lake Avenue. We want this new building to be an attraction as well as the old, because it's going to be a separate building. And the setback from height can be a real And the step back from height can be a real addition to the community instead of that building on 55 feet. I just, I hope you reconsider and maybe we can compromise on that. But I am not in favor of. The alley is really, the traffic pattern is going to be a challenge. The delivery, you know, aside from your people at the hotel, the deliveries and the trash pickups are necessary and they're going to have to be as good as they can be. The parking, we have an issue with our condo neighbors. Our, we have an issue with the condo neighbors and they need to realize that we're doing everything we can to address that. And I would hope that maybe in the future negotiations, they might want to commit to a financial interest. Maybe the city could be interested in helping in the finance, either through the condo purchase or rent. But the more cars we can put in your garage that you're going to build rather than changing parking in the neighborhood, I would like to see. But other than that, this is a step, this is a public step and we're going to have a lot of comments. And I'm glad that we're able to talk to you publicly because one-on-one is different than in public and the public deserves transparency of our conversations. Thank you. Might as well.
Thank you guys for coming and doing this. I really appreciate it. I don't want anybody to read anything into me not wearing blue, whatever that was. I miss it. It's over my head. Do not read into what I'm wearing. So I just want to make that clear. I am supportive of reopening the Gulfstream. We've talked one-on-one and I agree with Commissioner Robinson that it's so important for us to all be here in the same room together. I was one of the commissioners who said, I'm really worried about this, you know, the original design, this big hotel being visible from the street. But we haven't had a chance to all comment and weigh like, what does this mean? What are our options? Do we move it back? What do we give up for that? Do we bring it forward? What do we get for that? So I do think, I don't know that tonight's the time to hash that all out, but I look forward to having meetings with all of us in the room at the same time, public meetings where we can discuss those options and the direction of this project together. Because that has to be a bit hard for you guys to try to piece everything together. So these are, this is magical. This is how it should be. I agree with Commissioner Robinson. As we talked before, my three concerns were, you know, with parking. So I 100% am behind Commissioner Robinson that we want to get as many cars into the garage and not have to alter our public parking situation in any way. And the design of the additional building, I'm happy to see that you're working on changing the design and trying to make it feel like, you know, there's some variety in there. You don't look down the road. It's just one straight hall. I get claustrophobic when I walk down streets like that, when it's just like one big endless wall. So I'm glad to see that you're working. I'm glad to see that staff is able to provide you with good. I appreciate Mr. Gill's suggestion to give me the design guidelines from the Marriott, but I think they belong with our staff who is able to work with you and understand all that stuff a lot better than I am. And so the parking, the design, and then the last thing that we'll talk about eventually is the arrangement that we'll be making with our vendor at the beach. So those are my three things that we're going to be working, continue to have conversations around. And I'm excited to continue having these conversations.
If it's okay, I'll remove this because I think it's a little easier to understand and we have echo already. Commissioner McVeigh, first, thank you very much for coming and making it possible, even with the constraints of COVID and unusual technology and so on. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the listening efforts that you've done. And I do see that out of those listening efforts, it wasn't just listening, but that you've tried to incorporate some of that into the design. I appreciate that. A slight encouragement, and we'll hear 70 comments. So I imagine you'll get a range of things. But listen to a wide range of views because you stated many times and I've said that I support it, that you want the community to really like the building. So make sure, and I do agree with Commissioner Robinson, that if you got 75% of the community to like it, you'd be doing really well. I don't hold a standard for 100% approval. That's not realistic. But try to listen to a range of views. Thank you also for the explanation of your program needs. It's something that you've been clear about, that, look, we have certain things we need and the kitchen's got to go somewhere. I hear you on some of that. On the setback, I think probably, I'm guessing what you're going to hear is people aren't necessarily committed to such a big setback. And if you could show us maybe some alternatives of what's the trade-off? If you do 10 feet setback, what does it look like in terms of streetscape? What does it look like in terms of lowered height of the building or changing and massing or whatever? That will help people. And I understand, don't do detailed design because that's a lot of expense, but sort of blocky, massy kind of things, I think that will give us some options. The valet parking approach, I think, sounds like that's going to help out a lot in terms of the capacity. I'm not an architect. I'm certainly not a historic preservation specialist. I did look a little bit. I did go a while back to the Department of Interior site and it's fuzzy as far as I can tell as a non-professional. But I would encourage you to push that a little bit. Is there, how much flexibility is there in this clear distinction between old and new? Can there be some room for perhaps the front facade does match more? And I don't know. I think that would probably achieve a little bit more support for it. Tell me a little bit more about the green roof. I helped install one in Germany and I thought about doing one myself. Is it, are you actually going to make it waterproof and put native plants on top of it?
Cool. That's the goal, is to do that inset with native plants, a place where perhaps our people from inside could go out and have lunch or something. But 99% of it will be just green with planting and trees and the whole nine yards because what we heard from the condo owners was they didn't want to look at the back of the building. They were concerned about the mass of the building. So we cut that portion out in order to give them something nice to look at, something that was pleasing, something that made them happier, feel better. And, you know, it will look more residential, if that makes sense.
Trees may be tough, I don't know. There is, I believe it's at the University of South Florida. It's either South Florida or Central Florida. They've done a lot of research on what plants work well. Gopher apple, it turns out, one of the scrub plants works pretty well. You need water. It'll dry out real fast, but great, I like it. So, thank you.
Commissioner Malaga, District One, thank you for being here. Thank you for listening to the condo owners. Thank you for listening to the residents. Thank you for heeding the advice that I gave of creating a website and being on social media. I think that it has really moved the needle in regards to community engagement. So that's where I want to start. Thank you for asking about the green roof because down here I have circled a green roof with seven question marks, like, what is that? Perhaps you could do herbs on the green reef that you guys could then turn around and use in your restaurant. That could be, you know, far from the table, but hardened to table, I guess. Yeah, so I think that would be really cool. I also agree with Commissioner Stokes and a lot of the things that she said, so I'm not going to reiterate everything. As a business owner in town who's been here for 10 years, I get ROI. I understand the return on the investment. I understand that it's got to be a viable business plan. You will be supporting people in this city who will then in turn be supporting this city by paying the rent, paying the utilities and just being part of the local community. So I fully understand that. At the same time, I understand my locals. You know, I left Delray Beach because Delray Beach became Delray Beach. What I will say is that I've heard a lot of things about the height of the building and my wife and I drove around and we counted all the surrounding condos and how many staircases going up to those condos. And I'm like, they're all six or seven. One of them's four. So I don't have a real problem with the height because you are surrounded by the same kind of buildings. You're not dropping in the middle of a neighborhood and putting up a seven story building. I too have questions about the setback. I'm not an architect, but again, I know the return on the investment needs to be there. It needs to make dollars and cents, but it also needs to be aesthetically pleasing. So my other question in regards to the trolley, will you have stops downtown as well?
So any of our customers who want to go downtown and don't want to walk, we always shuttle them. We do that now at our hotels. We would be doing that here as well.
So will you pick like a certain.
Trolley would go through downtown.
So you'll pick like a certain corner and say, when you want to be picked up, meet at this corner and this is where we drop you off?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Or right now, what we do on the two downtowns that we serve with the trolley, we give them a cell phone number and they can page the trolley and they'll come to them and pick them up. And they can also say like, I have dinner reservations downtown. This is what I see the most of in the ones we have right now. I have dinner reservations downtown. I want you to drop me off at this time. I want you to pick me up or I'll text you to come pick me up. And we do a lot of that right now. So I anticipate it'll be the same system.
Okay, thank you.
And we use a valet.
Park City, Utah, has an app and you literally download the app and you ping wherever you are and the shuttle picks you up wherever you are, which is, I think it's a great service, especially we're trying to be a more mobile city. And obviously, the more cars we have in downtown taking up parking, the better for us. I'm really interested to hear what 70 comments sounds like. It's only my fifth month in office. 70 comments is going to be fun. But I'm just, I'm very thankful that you guys are really engaged, all of you, that you really care about our residents enough to be here to figure this out and work through this with us. You're not throwing in the towel because you're hearing a little concern. You want to be a good community partner and for that, I appreciate it. So thank you.
We intend to be part of the community for a long time. And so, once we have this feedback today, we'll go back, do some work, make some changes, and we'll be back in four or five weeks when everyone can arrange this and we'll present the changes again.
Thank you.
Hi, all right, good evening. I'm going to waive my right for the three minutes because we have such a big meeting ahead of us. I'm sure that I'll have the opportunity to speak with the Gills again, as we all do on the website. And Madam Clerk, I don't know if you're keeping time on the three minutes for us, but I would appreciate it if you would, just to help everybody get home before midnight.
I'd be happy to. And there were 103 comments, just seeing.
Oh, God, they may not all be read. I mean, that 103 times three is three. I'm not good at math.
Two minutes, two minutes.
Okay, we had to go to two minutes. All right, that makes more sense. We wanted three minutes, but 100 and something won't work. So now I'm going to pass the attention to Mr. William Waters from our Sustainability Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a clicker for the presentation, but. Okay, it's only from here. First presentation is about, we took this on several months ago, actually right after the first of the year, and asked WGI to give us an analysis of how can we maximize parking potential in four different areas along Golf View Road. As Commissioner Robinson mentioned, there is a parking strain in the area, not only due to some residents who don't have a lot of parking, but also some events that happen in Bryant Park on a regular basis. So WGI was challenged with how can we maximize and best utilize parking? These designs have been out for a little while and the feedback from the community was, don't encroach in the green space of the park and golf course. So I'm going to fly through these pretty quickly. Option one was 90-degree parking. Option two was 45. And due to the feedback that came from the public and the mayor and commissioners, I did a little study myself for lots three and four of how to restrip and best utilize that space so that angled parking would be maintained and would have little to no impact on the green space in Bryant Park. We were able to add 40 or 50 spaces. This does not include a cut in Lot Three, which was shown on the Gill's presentation to allow deliveries to and from the back of the hotel. We have figured that that option would probably result in loss of four to six spaces, but we still have a net gain overall. And this could be easily implemented since it's mostly restriping and rearranging existing infrastructure. What WGI did also do that helped facilitate this is they gave us a phasing plan on how to implement if you were going to rebuild Lot Three. So this is an idea that the west side, east side will be done first, the middle second, and the area closest to the hotel will be last. And Morgan Life could be incorporated with the improvements to the streetscape that would be part of the hotel project itself. That's the end of the presentation on parking. It's pretty short. I can answer questions as best as I can and we can move on to the next presentation after the commission makes her comments. Thank you.
Okay, three minutes. Commissioner Malaga, let's start with you.
In regards to parking, I have nothing. I know that we need to do a whole overall parking study. Thank you for listening to people wanting to have a concern about the 15 feet that we were talking about going in Bryant Park. So I'm glad that we've taken that off the table so we don't have to address those issues anymore. But I'm really happy to hear that the parking is going to be self-sustained with Gulfstream and now we're going to be able to add much-needed handicap spots and resident-only parking for that area. So I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner McVeigh?
I think I'm good. The only thing I would add is, was really from my last comment, encourage you to, as you're working on designs, to go ahead and post them on the website and give an indication, this is not final or this is just a massing study or this is just. Because I think that will build support as people see things along the way. And it's perfectly okay that it's not final. I think everybody understands things may change. Label it, you know, put draft across it, I don't know, whatever. And as far as the parking, I appreciate the studies. All of us are very relieved that Bryant Park will not be influenced by this. That seemed to be unanimous that people didn't want that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stokes?
I agree with everything that's been said previously. Just a question about the parking. And thank you, Mr. Waters, for taking us on to provide that alternate. But when we do these parking designs, can we take in like, are there spots for compact cars only or golf carts or like other modes of transportation to try to get more people access to our park, but not necessarily having to accommodate for like the worst-case size of a car? Is that something that's done typically? Or are people heading that way as we're trying to?
Yes, our parking requirements in the city have moved that direction. This is a preliminary study looking at parking spaces that are what is typical in the park now. We have talked about a possibility and when we move to an actual project, restriping, incorporating a percentage of compact spaces, parking for scooters, parking for bicycles, parking for other modes of transportation. The Gills and I have talked about an area for the trolley to stop and where could that be pulled off, where there's like cheese, there's some striping now where there may be an area to pick up some parking. So as part of moving toward a formal plan, that would all be incorporated because I just know, and we were talking about it earlier today, I've noticed that some of the hotels in downtown West Palm had a great demand for bicycle and other multimodal head operators. Marriott Residence Hotel comes to mind as well as the Canterbury Hotel. Both have bicycles available and both have discouraged driving to their hotel with buy a car. They've made it quite cost prohibitive to bring your car to that hotel. So I think there's a great interest, especially in the caliber of people that they're finding draw and the clientele, that they will want to use other modes of transportation will facilitate those being incorporated in the plan as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, last but not least, Commissioner Robinson, your three minutes begins now.
The park is sacred to the city and I'm glad that we're not affecting it. We will be affecting it. I don't really want a parking lot at our new hotel. The charging stations will be in place. The charging stations will be in place and the bicycles will be in place. It'll be a whole new day in Bryant Park when people are enjoying all the amenities we have. From, from the ocean to the circle. Thank you.
So now we're on to our third presentation. I'll turn it over to who that is.
Parameters of the letter of intent that was signed by you all. Guess maybe six weeks, two months ago. I'm kind of lost back in time with COVID. It all kind of runs together after a while. So. Understanding the letter of intent, and that was kind of the request of several people was to walk through that and explain what was signed on May 25th, 2021. Part of this includes the entitlement process. The application, once it comes in, will be an urban mixed use plan development. There is a request that the application fees, which are estimated at $12,000 be waived. There's a request also for expedited schedule. The schedule likely will be taken into account, the change to our affected party status. Could be as long as 180 days from the time the application is complete and submitted and then goes to the process. That the process will include a review by the site plan review team. Presentation and public hearing before the historic resource preservation board and then two hearings before the city commission. The application includes a whole variety of items. The plan development proportion that I just mentioned earlier is an urban mixed use plan development. There's a major site plan, a conditional use, the development of significant impact. There are two tiers of sustainable bonus incentive components. There's transfer development rights piece. And there's also a whole variety of certificates of appropriateness that are required. The most important being exterior alterations to the existing hotel and addition to the existing hotel. And then the newer portion will be considered new construction. I went through the entitlement process and the various hearings. There are also two other pieces that will be incorporated as part of this entitlement process. One is an economic investment incentive, which is based on the new revenues coming into the electric, water, sewer and stormwater systems. And then an infrastructure investment incentive, which was talked about, which we'll get to in just a minute, which involves improvements to the street scape, the parking and also utilities. With the city's economic investment incentive, the first three years of new revenues, we will give a portion of that. The actual rates of those are coming up for discussion by use commission very shortly on the rates, schedule of fees and charges. They vary right now, 20% for electric and then I think 2 and 1/2% for water, sewer and stormwater. The estimated value of that incentive, this is based on the square footages that were last provided, would be an incentive between 157,000 to 189,000 dollars. There is a performer and a performance bond that's required so that if the hotel does not perform as anticipated. The difference will be paid to the city and make up for providing the incentive incentive in the first place. If the project does perform better than expected, the city keeps the difference and the developer doesn't get anything extra. Infrastructure investment incentive, I think the city is already earmarked or appropriated possibly. I forget the terms with finance and Bruce will probably get mad at me, but there's a million dollars been identified as a street scape improvements along Lake Gulfview, First Avenue and South Lakeside Drive. That will require incentive agreement, which I've mentioned a little bit earlier. The request has also been to waive the sustainable bonus and transfer development right values. As a, this is not mentioned here on the slide, but the land development code allows for, if you restore historic building, you will meet right off the bat. Half of the sustainable bonus incentive value and another half could be made made up by other lead certification, Green Globe Certification, Florida Green Building Certification. The actual value of the sustainable bonus is about just under $500,000, but I believe the project will meet or very closely meet that. This project, based on it being initially started in January, actually December of 2020. The change the city commission made on the sustainable bonus where half of the value is in the form of a check to the city. This project is is grandfathered under the old system. The transfer development rights waiver, based on what I have been given, is estimated to be valued at just under a quarter of a million dollars. For the additional square footage, the floor area ratio and the additional floor that's proposed. To remind the public, this is not cash out of the city's pocket. This is, this would not happen or come forward unless the project becomes a reality. So it's not going to be tax money given to the developer. The applicant is also asking for an historic preservation ad valorem property tax abatement. Which allows for the city and county's ad valorem increase based on the restoration of the hotel to be frozen for 10 years. The estimate of that tax value for the, over that 10 year period, and this is just for the historic hotel. It's between 500, 700,000 dollars from the city and 420 to 525,000 from the county. That's based on our current mileage rate and the estimated value of what will be increased on the ad valorem take when the building is finished. Again, this is not money out of the city's pocket. This project, if it doesn't happen, we would not collect this money anyway. The other portions of the taxes, school debt, revolving debt, assessments for other things will still be paid. There are a couple of miscellaneous items that were requested and some of this was mentioned by the gills in their presentation. Looking at two way traffic on South Lakeside Drive. Supporting the provision of a valet drop off space on Lake Avenue. Reminding the public that Lake Avenue is owned by the sort of department of transportation. So it has to be a mutually agreeable approach to supporting that valet drop off. We're evaluating different parking options and scenarios. I mentioned some of those. Evaluate the reduction in the building permit fees. Since this project was actually identified, the building permit fees were dropped by a quarter of a percentage point. And they are proposed to be dropped by another quarter of a percentage point beginning October 1st for a combined a half a percentage point reduction in the building permit fee. So we've already taken on that. And that building permit fee reduction is for everybody applying for building permits in the city of Lakewood Beach. There was discussion of a golf course package for hotel guests collaborating on safety improvements for Bryant Park. Ms. Stokes mentioned the beach experience that is still being discussed on just what all that would be. And that will come back at some later time. Relocating the electrical utilities out of the alley. The electric utility is already been discussing undergrounding the utilities for this block and the cost of that is a quarter of a million dollars. And that utilities, that would take all the electric utilities out of the alley. And then also collaborating with the gills on traffic management during construction. The construction period is estimated to be anywhere from 15 to 18 months. And so the city will be heavily involved in apprising the public of traffic diversions, methods of management and some other things as that comes about. The applicant has also been talking about doing the HUD Section 108 loan. This does not affect any of the money that comes to the city through the community development block grant program. This is just asking for us to provide supporting, support while they're applying for this let loan. They've also asked us to support them in obtaining any kind of incentives the county could provide. And those that may be provided by the state and federal levels, including the federal income tax credit, which was discussed a little bit as governed by the National Park Service. I was also asked to kind of go over and give a little bit of an information on the CRA. Make it quick, Mayor, I'm sorry. There, the CRA has a letter of intent with them to provide 1.8 million dollars in infrastructure incentive, which could be used for acquisition impact fees, building permit fees and capacity charges. We do charge a water so capacity charge in the city. And then they've also asked for a CRA tenure tip on the new portion of the building, which is estimated to be worth life of a 10 year program, about two to 2 and 1/2 million dollars on the city portion and 1.4 to 1.8 million dollars on the county portion. And again, that's based on the mileage rates we currently have and on the estimated ad valorem assessed value of the new build. Again, reminding everyone, these taxes would not be collected otherwise. If the project doesn't become a reality and after 10 years, the city will be collecting all the taxes on both the new portion and the old portion. Which at that time would be likely close to about 700,000 dollars or more per year. Just some of the regulating documents that govern the project as it goes through the major thoroughfare guidelines, the preservation guidelines and also the arts and cultural master plan. And then again, as we always say when we close, we are invited to please be a part of Lakewood Beach.
Thank you. As you, you covered quite a lot of territory there. Commissioner, again, I'm asked you to limit yourself to three minutes just because we have so much going on. Let's start with Commissioner Robinson.
This obviously explains our commitment to this project. We're in the business, just like you are, except, you know. We don't get to, we get to share our income in terms of of infrastructure and services and and we have a responsibility to be responsible to be able to provide those. I I I just want you to appreciate our commitment. And coming, when it comes to the golf course and our ocean front park. That has value. And when that time comes to negotiate our commitment to your success. I think we should recognize that we're looking for you to recognize the value. And that'll be in the future. I don't, you know. When we get closer to the commitment, the papers, whatever it takes, but I'm looking forward to. The, I, is there a question on your side? Okay.
I, I think, I think we're just making comments and not engaging just to keep this before midnight.
Commissioner Stokes here. You know, it is, it is, I can understand where the public is coming from that that wonders like why for for a project as large as yours and a community as experienced as yours, why you need so much support from the city? And you know, in terms of these extra incentives through the utilities. I mean, waiving a $14,000 fee, you know, there's, it just seems like we're, we're trying to help every single way we can. We're not a city that has a surplus in our budget. We're not going to cede the taxes on this for 10 years. And we're, we've just listened to how we need that extra structure to be the height and the bulk that is to offset all the cost. So it's just unclear of like where the line is between how much additional support and density and things like that you need to make this a successful project versus, you know, how much is just, you know, going to your, you know, to the, to the company. So I can understand the concerns. I'm not an expert in this area, so I don't understand why the city has to commit so much financially to this project. But we are committed to this project. We want to see it go through. If there's anything we can do so that other than the increased businesses to the downtown and creating a thriving and, you know, getting this, this economic engine, everybody keeps saying up and running that we're all so excited about. If there's anything we can do to see some sort of return on our investment earlier. I don't know if it's like what Commissioner Robinson's saying with partnerships and helping us improve some other areas in the town. But it's just, I can totally understand where a lot of the public comes when they see how much we're investing in this project. We don't have but like 500,000 dollars in budget negotiation, like we're a partner. Yeah, so it's it's tough for our town to, to, that's a lot of money for us, you know, so. That's all, I already went to the beach, so we'll, we'll learn more about that.
Thank you. I'm, I am going to take an opportunity here. I think we all need to remember that, you know, and it's, it's a lot of money, all that. And I'm not, I need to understand it a little bit clearer later. But I think we need to remember that we might, you know, the tax thing might be going on, but at the same time, we're going to be having a huge electric customer, a huge water customer, a lot of local employment for our people. So it's not like we're just giving and giving and we're not getting anything back. I just want to, it's saying, I just want to sort of point that out. Commissioner McVeigh?
Thank you, Mr. McVeigh. I think I have two specific questions or comments or things that that you might address at a later point. But I, I, I think I'm echoing a lot of what what you've just heard, that there is a good deal of concern in the community that most people who buy a house don't get 10 years tax abatement on it. They got to start paying the taxes when they get there. And they don't get extra, the money spending, a million dollars, the city spending money to improve around them. So there are a number of things that do seem like quite a bit of involvement. Either a concrete contribution or a letting go of an expected contribution of public taxpayer funding. And I guess what I would ask is simply be sensitive to that, be aware of that. And and do the best that you can in terms of, you know, trying to find ways to address the concerns that people have about the shapes of the building and so on. My specifics are and not at this point, I think, because I don't think that's the part of it, but to file this away. Could you elaborate on the safety improvements at Bryant Park? There's a concern as to how the hotel will, what expectations they'll have at the park, how that will influence current usages of the park. So safety improvements is sort of an unclear kind of thing for us. The other one is, if you could elaborate at some point on that the hotel, I guess, has an interest in the beach experience being the same as that of a public user of the park. That's very confusing sounding. I mean, if you want the same experience as public user, then you're not really asking for anything. That's what public users are, you know, so maybe some clarification at some point as to what, what the expectations are. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Stokes, no, Malaga.
You always get us confused because
I know. You're so similar. You look so much alike.
So first, let me just say, being a business owner for 10 years, I'm going into my 11th year, I will tell you that 10 years flies by. So I see the 10 year commitment that the city is making. And I know that I've been here for 11 years and that building has sat vacant for 11 plus years. And I would be very happy if this was the year we were collecting taxes and we had 10 years of viability. So that's first. I don't see us as making an initial investment like Commissioner Stokes said. I see us as being partners in this endeavor. And that's the mindset that residents and business owners alike will take. The city of Lakewood Beach is a partner in the Gulfstream Hotel's success, meaning we're putting skin in the game. Yeah, we're taking some lumps and not collecting some taxes upfront, but we haven't been collecting those taxes. The tax abatement that I think Commissioner McVeigh just spoke of with buying a house, you don't create jobs when you buy a house. You don't create an economic downflow when you buy a house. You know, you do pay a certain amount of taxes and, you know, that's, that's what being homeowners for. So this is a win win and it is a give give, right? But at the same time, I'll say to you what I said to another investor. You're getting prime location property in the state of Florida, in the wealthiest county in Palm Beach, less than a quarter mile from the Atlantic Ocean. Across some golf course, there's a lot to be said about that. And that's, you guys already know that. Which is why you're working on making sure that you listen to the residents, because you know what a gem this spot is. And I don't need to reiterate that. So I really think that the mindset for me, when I see this investment, this is an investment on the city's behalf. An investment to our successes and to job creation and being able for us to look back and go, you know what? I served for three years. I served for six years. Look what I brought to fruition. Look what we helped do. Look at the jobs we created. Look at the successes that we've had. Yes, you know, we could be beheaded by some people, but like Commissioner Robinson said, we are not going to make everybody happy. So with that being said, I am very interested in what that golf package is going to look like. And the beachfront, it makes sense. If I stay at a hotel and there's an ocean, I want to be able to have a chair and an umbrella and a towel and not have to schlep my own stuff down there. So we are not selling the beach. We are not renting our beach. We are just allowing the residents and the hotel users to be able to use our beach as anybody else would be. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malaga. I appreciate that. So now we are on to, if I'm not mistaken, public comment.
Madam Mayor, I just, I just wanted to encourage everybody, all of us, to experience the CRA Zoom. experience the CRA Zoom meeting with Joe Minicozy on economic development, which was horrible.
Yeah, I wasn't able, obviously unable to attend that, but I will be watching that. Madam Clerk, are we ready for the in-person public comment?
I'm ready. I don't know however, who's collecting the cards. I believe there was a sign-in sheet and they were going to
We got it.
Do the comment according to that.
And here, Commissioner Robinson has him in front of him. I have Todd. He wants me to read. Are you, go ahead, Mayor.
No, these are the, well, I think we're taking the people that have actually came to this, the meeting in person tonight first.
And Commissioner Robinson will call them one at a time up to the podium.
Okay, and, and then we'll take the Zoom and then we'll take the ones that.
Commissioner Malika here. Can we take a five-minute break before we get into this?
Sure. Let me just say one thing because I'm going to be cutting out pretty soon. Madam Clerk, depending on how the time goes tonight, I know we have over 100 cards. There might be a time where it's not going to fit. So I'm wondering if at some point the commission, and I won't be there anymore, if Vice Mayor Robinson will help us with this. Maybe if it's, you know, like 10:30, 11 o'clock, just, you know, go the name and opposed or for, just as a, to recap them a little bit. Reminding everyone that they can make the same comment on the Gulf Stream website that they would make tonight. That's just a suggestion. I have no idea how long this is going to last.
I have to say that not all of the comments are two minutes. Some of them are kind of brief.
Okay.
So, just so you know, there are a couple that are lengthy, but most are not that lengthy.
Okay, great. So.
But still, even if they're 30 seconds, that's still an hour plus.
Yeah, it's a lot. So I am going to check off, check out and just listen now from now on because I really need to go and stop. So I want to thank everyone for attending. I want to thank the Gills, Mr. Melmo. We have not had the pleasure of meeting yet, but I look forward to it. And thank you all for your cooperation and your, and the staff especially. We asked, I think just Tuesday or yesterday, could we please have some form of this in person? And I think it's worked out really well because even the presentation as the commission and as the Gills are speaking, it's easier to see them and more organic than it would have been if it had been in the commission chambers. So I want to thank our staff for being adaptable and uncomplaining. So with that, Commissioner Robinson, I'm going to pass the gavel to you. Remember, no, we're not responding to comments. We are merely listening to comments tonight. Does everybody understand that?
All right. Now, now we're down to a four-minute break.
Well. Oh, no, that's fine. That's fine. But I just, I'm going to be saying, I'm going to be sort of walking away, but I just wanted to remind everyone that it's, it's really for comments rather than discussion. So I want to thank everyone, and I will be tested again tomorrow morning, and hopefully it'll be negative again. It's my third time.
Get better. Get better.
Thank you. I've never, I haven't been this sick in years. It's just been awful. Thank you very much. And now it's time to take a break. Thank you.
Now we're down to three minutes.
Vice, Vice Mayor.
Go ahead and do seven minutes, Commissioner Robinson.
Vice Mayor, since we've already brought our public into the ballroom, I would.
In the interest of public.
I would ask if we could just proceed and then have a break once we get into the bulk of the comments, which will be read online. This is the small portion of public comment, and everyone's already seated.
How many people are there in line?
Everybody okay with that? I'm good. Sorry. All right. Let's, I've got two that I want to but you want to do the public speaking first?
Yeah, well, there, I think there's, there's public in person and there's also public that would like you to read their comment and won't come up to the podium.
Okay, Deborah Robert. She in house?
She is. Yeah, there was an order, Commissioner Robinson. Well, we have a list. Just one second. I think he's just shuffling in.
Yeah. There's an order here.
Herman, you've had the gavel for four minutes.
Vice Mayor, this is the order. Just read those names and they'll.
Todd wrote his out. I'll read it. Let me, let the new hotel be.
Commissioner Robinson, please.
He's here.
Do you want to speak?
Go ahead, read it, then I'll speak.
All right.
No.
Vice Mayor, let me just jump in here before this comes off the rails. If you're going to speak tonight, make a decision when you get up. If you want it read in the record, we'll read it. If not, walk straight to the podium and then read your, read your comment. Okay, we won't, we won't do the back and forth.
City manager, one other thing, because some people apparently submitted comments online for me to read and are there in person. I need the full name, so I don't therefore read when somebody's already spoken. You get one comment.
Go ahead, Todd.
Todd Townsend, 502 South J Street, won't take much of your time at all. I really like the stuff that you all are doing. I think that we need to break this rule that was made up some time ago about our height limit. I think that the part of this building that faces Lake Avenue should be up at least three stories above the, above the, above the Gulf Stream so that we can advertise from A1A. This project does not advertise from A1A whatsoever. But I really like what you all are doing. I'm just really grateful. Speaking for everyone, we are grateful. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
So let's, let's change it. Let's break this height limit for this project, for a hotel and for an attraction. You have to change that.
John Zerdy.
Hope to talk to you all later.
Hey, good evening. I don't know, Mayor, but good evening, commissioners and everybody. Thank you very much for your time tonight and being up here, Mr. Waters. Hi. My name's John Zerdy. I'm a local architect and a general contractor. I have a business here, right here in Lake Avenue. Can you hear me okay? A little closer. How's that better? Thank you. My wife says that to me all the time. So, you know, professor of architecture for about 20 years as well. So I have some background. Also, I was sitting in your seats there for a little while, for a few years. So I, I really understand and I applaud really bringing this to the public's attention tonight and getting this feedback. But I hope that you do find that balance and the courage, really what it's going to take here to go ahead and get this project done. But on the front setback, a lot of questions about that, you know, your planning does require you to use that. You have these things to get that up there, and I live in Bryant Park. I love to walk down that street. There's a blank there. We need to fill that in. I think if you move that up, you can get more parking that you still need behind it, maybe get three floors. You know, you can't see, but the first two, the top two floors coming down Lake Avenue. I don't know why you would push all that. You can't even see it driving there. All right? So if you did that, you should be able to at least pull some more parking in close, move everything on the edge where we can still walk by and not have a void. They're like, we're trying to avoid and still have, I think. So as far as the parking goes, you guys could use that. I've, we have nice events, walk our dogs, everything. You'd still be able to do all of that and probably even better if you have a little more parking because those condos right to the south have always been a problem. Screaming louder than ever. And Herman, you know that, okay? You know that loud and clear. So that's not a problem to do that. I think those are good ideas to relieve some of that parking and accommodate that. All right, so.
Thank you. That's time. Thank you. Your time is up.
Really? All right. Well, I think, thank you for the time. I just would say that the style in the 50s and 60s as a historic teacher is the least recognized time in architectural history. I liked the earlier design a lot better. Thank you very much. Good luck. I hope it happens.
Pam Turillo.
Oh, come on. It's only been a couple of months. You forgot how to pronounce my name already. Hi, everyone. I'm so happy to be here. It's kind of fun being on this side of the microphone in the podium. I want to thank everyone. I really wanted to just express my sincere thanks to Amara and Amy and Bill and CDS. It has been such an honor working with them, preparing to, to bring back this iconic historic hotel. We worked for many years on it and, you know, you want to talk controversy, just mention the beach, the Gulf Stream and the golf course. You want to start a fight somewhere, mention one of those out on the streets. So we know that that's been an issue, and I know that there are people on both sides of the fence and a lot of crazy and crazy towns sometimes, but the people have spoken and they're really in favor of this project. I happen to like the earlier design as well, knowing what the historic guidelines are for a nationally recognized property and how it has to be differentiated. But I'm all for it. I'm not for the 55 feet backwards also. I think that you should be utilizing all the space that you have. But I also want to just offer you some friendly advice now that I'm not there and, and you're negotiating with such lovely people. There's a lot of things being said about affordable housing. You know, some of the people here are not saying the same thing when they're not sitting up there and they're bringing up all kinds of issues. Please do not let anything stop you from going forward with this project. We had an opportunity to meet a lot of people and to hand choose people that were good for this community, that cared about people and that had proven themselves worthy of taking on this responsibility, making something that the people want, and also being good to the community and reviving a city, not just a hotel. That hotel is the heartbeat of this community and it needs people like you. I want to thank CDS for standing by when things went kind of crazy for a little while there, and you have been in it the whole time. And Bill, I am so very grateful. Just hold strong. We'll get it done. Get your feedback from the community and know that there are so many people in this community that are excited.
Thank you. That's your time. I'm sorry.
Heartbeat back. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Duckworth. Is Gary in the house? Kim Lingle.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kim Lingle. Thank everyone for being here tonight and giving us all this opportunity to hear everyone and to give our feedback. Mostly I want to thank the current commission for any work that you've done to help this project along as well as the past commissioners and mayor that helped to push this along. I had no idea that there was any pushback to welcoming to our community until the other day. I can tell you there's no, a person that I know, and I know everyone sitting up there and most of the people in this room, would we say, we are so excited and grateful for you to be here. We are difficult. We're very strange, but we are the best community you could have chosen to develop it because we will have your back. We will support you and we will do whatever it takes to make you successful. Good luck.
Thank you. Greg Richter.
Good evening. Greg Richter, 1202 South Palm, Lake Worth Beach. First of all, I want to thank the Gills once again for being out here to bring us an update on the pool, on the pool, on the hotel, and also your commitment to the city by moving here, investing in the city. I appreciate the fact that you've reached out to different groups. Like Ms. Lingle just expressed that I never knew there was really any opposition to this, and there really isn't. It is a very small voice. 82% of the voters in this town voted for this for all three elements of that thing on that election. We voted for the height increase. We voted for them to do what they're doing. 82%. It's even better than your 75%. So we all agree. Okay? So I just think we're hearing just way too much noise and getting way too much attention. It's like someone writes a bad review. It's the person that gets, feels upset, they're more emotional and they write a bad review. The people that like what they're doing, they're content. The city's content. We like what you're doing. And just please keep doing this. Someone was asking about ad valarium and what have you. If you have a historic home, contributing home in this town, you have a 10-year, you have a 10-year moratorium on, on ad valarium. So this is not something that's just being given to them. This is given to any contributor to historic property in Lake Worth. So just understand that. This is no free giveaway here. Just thank you all very much. 82% voted for this thing, and let's make it happen. Thank you.
Steve Wild, or no, I'm sorry, Matt Villa, and then Steve Wild.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Matt Villa, 1103 Ventnor Boulevard, which is in Palm Beach Gardens. I was actually a member of the St. Louis Board of Alderman, which is the city council in St. Louis for 14 years, and I was on your side of, of the negotiating table with the Gills as they accomplished the impossible on several projects in St. Louis, projects that no one else could or would do. And I can tell you that they, they passed with flying colors. They are community partners. They became a good friend of mine, and I just want to speak on their behalf and say that they can accomplish the impossible. Just work with them and give them a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Wild.
Good evening. My name's Steve Wild. I'm from St. Louis, Missouri, 21 South Tealwood. I'm here on vacation, and this, if you'd asked me 24 hours ago how I'd be spending my vacation, this would have been the last thing I would have thought of. But I compliment your beautiful city and your beautiful area, and it's, and it's wonderful. But the last 20 years, I had been a real estate and public finance attorney, and early in my career, I met the Gills and we worked on a couple of projects together. I've never worked for the Gills, but I've been in other roles on other aspects of the financing, and I've done many deals that are of similar complexity and scope as this historic renovation. And the Gills are among the best at, at what they do, and this, they make it look easy, but this is not an easy area. It's very tricky. They, but they navigate the rules. They stay within the rules. They start the projects and they finish the projects that they start. And then they stay with the projects and operate them. And so you're lucky to have them here, and that's all I have to say. I'm so glad that I got to connect with them on the airplane, reconnect with them, and the fortune is that I'm here to share those experiences with you and congratulate you.
Look forward to your vacation in Gulf Stream Hotel.
Thank you very much.
So, Deborah Roberts.
Before I can begin, I just want to clarify if it's two minutes or three minutes. Benker posted three, city clerk says two, and it's, is it Evelyn Wood speed reading or is it, it is three? Thank you.
It's two minutes, Deborah.
You appreciate it. I'm Deborah Robert. I live at 127 South K Street, an historic cottage, and my husband Randy. I thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commission and everyone else for the opportunity to speak here tonight. When I look at the Gulf Stream Hotel, even if it's current state of neglect, I can imagine it in its heyday in a vibrant, hopeful city where so much is possible. I imagine what it would be like alive and well. Listening to the Gills from the beginning of their campaign and reviewing all I could about restoration in St. Louis, not just on their website, but different news outlets and the like. I no longer imagine what it could be like. I see it. I see it right now. I spent over 25 years staying at hundreds of hotels around the world. The ones that stood out were not the chains, the Ritz, the Four Seasons, the Sheridans. It was always boutique hotels that embraced local charm and culture. Where unlike a stay at a cookie cutter space, locals would warm up when they learn you're staying there, eager to talk about hotels' connection to the community. This is the sense I get from the Gills. They wish to meld their project into our culture as a seamless part of a thriving little city with a really quirky attitude, and I love that. Right off the bat, they spoke of using local resources for the needs of the hotel, forging relationships with our laborers, artisans and businesses. I imagine local farms providing produce, bakeries, florists and entrepreneurs expanding their businesses to meet the needs of the hotel. Local artists will show their wares in its public spaces, giving exposure and opportunity. I imagine a myriad of solid, steady jobs, a short bus ride away for many desperately in need of work and guests wandering along our main corridors, window shopping and dining. I know we can all help make the Gulf Stream one of the most vibrant hotels in the county. We can. Why? Because we. Because we are Lake Worth Beach and I believe the Gills are as well. I do believe this. The redrawn renderings, listening to the-
Sorry, Deborah, that's your time.
Thank you.
That was three minutes?
It's two minutes.
Oh, it was two. Okay. Thank you very much. And to the naysayers, I say, just look at the larger vision, not just the architecture. Thank you.
All right. Philomena.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, can you read the full name, please?
Thanks. Could you-
With difficulty, Philomena Tangzilius.
Thank you. Did you get that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hi there. I'm Philomena Tangzilius. I'm with Colwell Banker in Lake Worth. And I have observed the Gulfstream for many, many years. On the negative side, it's a derelict eyesore that for many years has come and gone. People have been doing things, condos, condo hotels, but they never really got off the ground. And hats off to you, Amy Adamerit. You have taken on a wonderful property and you need to see this through to completion. I see it reminiscent of the Don Caesar in St. Petersburg, Florida. I do think both elements should be the same. And I do think that with everybody here working and pooling together, it's going to be an infusion of energy for the community, jobs for the community, and going down the line, tourism, et cetera. And all that can bring is more revenue to the city of Lake Worth, which will help with all of the deficits they may have right now. And I would like to thank you very much. If I can assist in any shape or form, I'll be very happy to do so. I have worked on historic renovations in places such as Edinburgh, et cetera, et cetera. And I wish you the best of business luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Gary Duckworth here? Adam Clerk, you're going to read the rest?
Is that all the public comments in person? Vice Mayor, that's all the public people who were making comments in person?
Those were all the names and cards I have.
That's all we have.
Okay. All right. So it was my understanding that there'd be a break after this before getting into the Zoom portion?
All right. We'll go back to five minutes.
Vice Mayor, it's at your pleasure. Are you calling for five-minute recess?
Yes. Only because it was requested. I'm not, you're good with five minutes? All right.
Let's just call for a five-minute break.
We'll recess for five minutes and adjourn in four minutes. Melissa?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Are you ready to reconvene?
I am ready.
All right. I'm going to call the meeting back to order and then start with the public comments that you will be reading.
Okay. I believe we're going to go to the people that wanted to speak on their own behalf. I emailed everybody who wrote that they wanted to do their own comments. Your name has to match the name on your comment card. You must have a first and last name. So Keith, can you please promote? Sorry, I have to get through the 23 pages of comments here. Please promote Ronaldo Diaz to panelist to speak.
And that's going to be for two minutes?
Correct. They're all two minutes.
Starting now.
Thank you so much. Ronaldo Diaz, I wanted to point out something that Commissioner Robinson said early, mentioning Bryant Park and describing it as a sacred place. And I think that is really a great way to describe Bryant Park. But there's also so many other things about this town that are sacred. And you know, among that is the excellent diversity of trees that we have here, the environmental friendliness overall, the community, the walkability, so on and so forth. And as someone who was born and raised here, I mean, it's pretty sad to think that I'm pretty sure at my point in life, it seems like the Gulfstream has been closed more than it has been open. So I think without a doubt, the community here, nobody is against the restoration and reopening of Gulfstream. There's nothing, "We want more." But we're, I and I know others are concerned about the additional annex that's being added on. Because like Bryant Park, like the walkability, like so many characteristics of the reason why many of us stay and live in Lake Worth, that annex, that large building doesn't really reflect, you know, that sacred community aspect that we have, that sidewalk to sidewalk, massive buildings, you know, like Lucerne and others. It just doesn't reflect the community's character that makes us so special. And I think it's a little disappointing to see the developers push that additional building, additional structure. Because I do think the Gulfstream in itself, if done properly and restored properly, it can be successful without the addition of so many, of such a big building. As an environmentalist, it's really important that we admit to ourselves that we do need to live at a slightly higher density.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. That's your time.
Thank you.
Keith, can you promote Cara Jennings, please, to panelist to speak?
Whose time is that being credited to?
Ms. Jennings, can you unmute yourself?
Thank you. Can you start my time?
I can.
Good evening, everyone. Having varied opinions on how to restore and redevelop is very important. I think we'd all agree that with debate, critique, and dialogue, we can come to the best decisions. I don't love the massing and the height, but I'm going to set that aside for right now and talk about the finances that I believe it was Mr. Waters just went over previously. This sounds like a good dose of corporate welfare. These aren't small, local developers. These are large developers. This is a corporation. And yes, we, you know, want the city to invest in the project. But, you know, I wasn't following all the numbers, but it's definitely in the millions between the city's contribution and the CRA. And, you know, to listen in to your budget hearings and hear how strapped we are for money and to hear you guys talk about that week in and out, and then we're going to find money to redo the streetscaping on the blocks surrounding this property. D Street near where I live still has potholes. So yes, please, give them some appropriate amount of financial support. But at this point, it sounds over the top. And no tax coming in off these properties for 10 years, that has got to be renegotiated. That is, that is really just too much. To do that and give them the height and give them the density, that whole package, I think, is unfair and doesn't represent the best needs of the residents. You know, I think to say, "You get the height and you get the density, but we get the tax money," would be more appropriate. And please get the policy and ensure that they do local hiring. Are they hiring local teams? Are they hiring minority and female businesses? How can you ensure that? How can you get that into these agreements so that our residents really do get hired? It only benefits us if we also get hired to do the work. So please ensure that.
Thank you. I will now proceed with the reading of the comments. James Tebby, 15 South Gulfview Road, Unit 701. The hotel project has turned into a monster that overwhelms the neighborhood. The shortage of parking is extreme. Developers say that only 30% of guests will have cars. That might be true in St. Louis, but not in Lake Worth. The lack of normal setbacks are ugly and dangerous. A half abandoned alley is to be used for the exit for the parking garage, the loading docks, condo parking, and all the through traffic. This blocks emergency- This blocks emergency vehicles when trucks are partially, partially blocking the alley or when people are forced to double park to unload. When a moving van parks in the alley to unload, things will get very tight. The city will see no financial gain for 10 years if ever. This is not what the people voted for when granting variances. Robert Breedenbach, 15 South Gulfview Road. Why are you not respecting the scale and rhythm of the neighborhood? Lake Avenue is more mid-rise and dense, but by the time you get to South First Ave, we have one and two-story residences, residences, yet your large-scale project is eight to nine stories high for the entire block. Next is Ricardo Martin, 419 North Lakeside Drive. Sorry, could not make it in person to this especially important meeting. I wanted to expect to ma, express to Madam Mayor and the four city commissioners my support for the Gulf Stream Hotel project. We have a unique situation where we have not only an experienced developer of historical properties, but an experienced hotelier that could operate the Marriott Hotel, too. I wanted to thank Amrit and Amy Gill of St. Louis Restoration for showing their interest in restoring this long-ignored gem and developing the surrounding property of the Gulf Stream Hotel into a unique economic asset for downtown Lake Worth Beach's business community. The surrounding immediate neighborhoods of Bryant Park and Parrot Cove will certainly benefit from this positive new hotel. The importance of the Gulf Stream's opening to Lake Worth Beach cannot be underestimated. As proposed, a world-known hotel, hotel brand from Marriott Hotels, the project is assured economic success, not only based on the experience of St. Louis Restoration, but the solid Marriott Hotel brand name. The Marriott brand's extensive worldwide reservation system, one of the best in the hotel industry, can provide a unique jumpstart to this new hotel operations and to our surrounding business community. I had the pleasure in my recent banking career to provide construction financing for three Marriott-branded hotels, two in Orlando and one in Tampa. Their reservation, reservation system, as addressed in the internal bank analysis and reviews, indicated around 50% occupancy projection from the day the hotel opened in their respective markets. For the Gulf Stream, using this as an example, by taking 50% of the 144 hotel rooms and expecting one person to stay per room, provides for 74 tourist or business visitors per day visiting our restaurants, bars, music entertainment, and shops of downtown Lake Worth Beach. This equates to an annual estimated, that's the end of the time. Next is Monica Buck, 412 Seventh Avenue North. I am not in favor of the proposed Gulf Stream reservation, renovations additions. It's too big, not in keeping with our area's scale. The building is just too big, too big, and it dwarfs the historic Gulf Stream. Joanne Kelly, 1202 South Lakeside Drive. Hello, all on the commission. Hopefully I have the courage, we have COVID cowards, to show up in person at the workshop on the 19th. We do want to support a go-ahead with the Gills developing the Gulf Stream Hotel project. From reading the backup material, it seems that the company has made adjustments to their plan and met the suggestions and criticisms of the concerned Lake Worth public. It is time to go ahead on this project. Please proceed with encouragement and a yes to proceed. Thanks. Sandra Eckberg, 15 South Gulfview Road, Apartment 603. I do not believe the current Gulf Stream Hotel design should be approved. The hope, the project is too big and too dense for the neighborhood. In addition, the developers want to take possession of three of the Gulf Stream condominiums, very limited parking spaces for an unneeded road off South Gulfview to provide access to their garage. The city must reject this proposed land grab. Moreover, the current alleyway should not be moved as it services the Gulf Stream condominium and has done so for more than 40 years. The city also needs to demonstrate good urban planning by requiring the developers to include sufficient parking spaces for their currently planned 149 hotel rooms, 100 rental apartments, event space, and restaurants. Parking in the areas at a premium today and without changes to the developers' plans, local parking will not be available to other Bryant Park residents, including those of us at the condominium. Further, the design of the project needs to, to provide greater setbacks than the proposed four feet along the east side as the Gulf Stream condominium's Hampshire Building's rear unit doors open directly onto the alley. Finally, in view of the surfside collapse, engineering studies before and after construction will be needed of our buildings as construction equipment will be virtually on top of the condominium structures. I personally believe the developers should underwrite these studies as their project is the reason such studies are needed. Patricia Newhoff, 15 South Gulfview Road. The proposed hotel size is too much for the whole block. Our streets are narrow and the apartments and houses will end up being surrounded by high-rise, high-rise buildings and ultimately appear disproportionate. The aesthetical appearance will cause the real property to lose great value. The residents approved to have the annexed building with a seven-story high. There was no mention of building apartments in the rest of the property. The new project goes up to nine floors with, with estimated 109 rental apartments. Parking spaces nowhere in the public available plans, as is mentioned of the number of parking spaces that will be assigned to employees, hotel guests, outside visitors. Apparently, there are plans to have a trolley for transportation. Bryant Park, the park belongs to all town residents. It's a gathering place for the community and should be kept as such. No changes like using part of the area for parking. This project is simply too big and not taking in consideration the architecture of the surrounding buildings. Mostly two-storehouses and small streets. Do we want to preserve, preserve the town and make changes, keeping the character and design that makes it special? Or do we want to destroy the area like it has already been done in places like South Beach, Miami? Gabriella Bonet, 14, I'm sorry, 1140 Seventeenth Avenue North, Apartment 7. My name is Gabby, I live within 400 feet of the proposed project. I share the objections raised by the other objectors regarding the impacts of this project. I have also the following additional objections. Increase in traffic, parking for the huge increase in units, rent increases. This project is not compatible to the neighborhood. The significant increase in height and zoning will impact my family and our neighborhood. Cecilia O'Shea Roar, Rome, 15 South Gulfview, Gulfview Apartment 601. Should residents of the Gulf Stream condominium have guests? Is there a process of some, some type of path enabling an owner's friend or family to park within an available open spot? Some states have parking books for owners' purchase for such situations. Thank you for your time and consideration. Barbara Resch, 422 South J Street. I'm very excited that the Gulf Stream development is moving forward. I think that having the Gulf Stream back in action will make a huge difference in our downtown area. We need to move forward with this project and get out of the way. It has been too long since the Gulf Stream has been an active part of our community. I really look forward to the day when I can walk into the restaurant and have a meal and sit down and look at Lake Avenue. Susan Coggan, 615 North Ocean Breeze. Ed and I are so excited about the future of the Gulf Stream. After years of waiting, Restoration St. Louis is going to bring the beauty back to this historic building and revitalize downtown Lake Worth Beach. We attended the initial meeting and left with a renewed confidence that the residents and leaders of Lake Worth Beach were ready to support this project and they had found an extremely capable partner to complete the restoration. RSL has listened to the concerns and suggestions from the community. We fully support the restoration project and are looking forward to the grand opening. Darlene Tebby, 15 South Gulfview Road, Unit 701. The hotel project has turned into a monster that overwhelms the neighborhood. The shortage of parking is extreme. Developers say that only 30% of guests will have cars. That might be true in St. Louis, but not in Lake Worth Beach. The lack of normal setbacks are ugly and dangerous. A half abandoned alley is to be used for the exit for the parking garage, loading docks, condo parking, and all the through traffic. This blocks emergency vehicles when trucks are partially blocking the alley or when people are forced to double park to unload. When a moving van parks in the alley to unload, things will get very tight. What kind of development would use a service alley as the main thoroughfare? The city in the past has done a miserable job of allowing development without the necessary parking, and they are trying to do it again. Daryl Shadow, 231 North Ocean Breeze. As one of the overwhelming majority who voted in favor of raising the height limits in that block, this administration is obligated to continue with this project. We have found a great developer and Restoration St. Louis. Let's keep moving forward for the good of Lake Worth Beach. Marie Kirk, 31 South Gulfview Drive, Units 15 and 16. As a third-generation owner of two units and Hampshire Gulfview condominium, I'm delighted to hear about the renovation and revitalization of the Gulf Stream Hotel. I have wonderful memories of not only staying in the hotel, but enjoying dinner with my grandparents in the restaurant on numerous occasions. I fully support the hotel project with the hope of creating memories with my children and future grandchildren. It is imperative for the city and Gills to embrace the historic nature of the neighborhood as well as the buildings, giving significant thought to reducing the proposed density and height of the residential building and annex. It is detrimental to the safety and well-being of your neighbors to not provide a permanent parking solution as well as eliminating the alley to creating a main road adjacent to our condominium buildings when more logical and prudent options exist. Lastly, given the recent tragic collapse of the Champlain Towers, it is imperative the city and Gills provide a baseline engineer, engineering study for the Gulf Stream condominium, condominium buildings and provide sufficient reserves or bond for remediation if necessary. Amy Faradur, 30 South J Street. When the Gulf Stream Hotel closed in 2005, I thought it was, I thought for sure it would only be shuttered for a short time. It had so much going for it, location, history, charm, and a surrounding community that supported it. A centerpiece, centerpiece in downtown Lake Worth since 1923, the Gulf Stream Hotel has now sat derelict for 15 years. The landmark building has been the victim of political infighting, bad business decisions, and lack of municipal leadership and vision. Enter Restoration St. Louis. This developer has renovated more than 400 historic properties and is the right fit for downtown Lake Worth Beach. The community wants you to be full and committed partners with this developer. I urge the commission to show leadership and make this long overdue project happen with Restoration St. Louis. Janet Lovinara, 223 North K Street. Thank you to the Gills for your pursuit of the Gulf Stream restoration. Thank you to our commission and our mayor for not allowing the ball to be dropped on this much-needed improvement to our city. I can't wait to celebrate a milestone birthday in June 2023 at the Gulf Stream. My only concern now is how fast can you get a shovel in the ground? Andrew Gottlieb, dear Lake Worth Beach City Commissioners, I'm writing this letter on behalf of the Lake Worth Beach City Tree Board. At the recent meeting conducted on August 12, 2021, board members discussed the agenda packet associated with the upcoming city commission work session for the Gulf Stream Hotel. Board members unanimously agreed that using city green space, specifically Bryant Park, as well as the area denoted as Lot 2 for added parking is inconsistent with the city's sustainability mission. We strongly recommend parking alternatives that do not infringe upon the park or other public green space be considered recommended by the commission. The area adjacent to the polygon denoted as Lot 3 contains a variety of native trees that provide important ecological and social functions. By expanding parking in this area, residents who can currently enjoy the tree canopy and related shade will be subject to additional car noise and exhaust, and it is unclear if trees would need to be removed. Please note that Lake Worth Beach has limited shaded areas for public enjoyment, and Bryant Park is very important to our community health and enjoyment. Thank you for considering parking alternatives that do not infringe upon public green space and that will not impact the city's tree canopy or enjoyment thereof. Charlie Hagan, 123 South Federal Highway, I support. Christian Collier, 17 South Lakeside Drive Apartment 2. I co-own a unit at the 55-plus Gold Coast Towers condominium with my mother at 17 South Lakeside Drive, a lot on the other side of the street from the historic Gulf Stream Hotel and proposed project. We are in the six-unit annexed building which rests about halfway between Lake Avenue and First Avenue South. The six-unit annexed building was built in 1973, a few years after the original 30-unit building was constructed. We learned at Purchase that the parking lot was two parking spaces short, affecting two units in the annexed building. Units 1 and 2 have no allotted parking spaces. While this was never a problem before with ample public parking available or the street, the scope of the Gulf Stream project has my 75-year-old mother worried and stressed. We are requesting that two spaces be provided directly in front of the annexed building or comparable area to compensate for the two missing parking spots in the same way that street parking has been provided to residents on South Gulfview Road with signage that reads "Parking by residential permit only." We are in dire need of a parking solution as this project moves forward and are hopeful that the city of Lake Worth can help its longest-standing and most vulnerable residents. Thank you. Margot Emery, 1323 North Lakeside Drive. The Gulf Stream can be the jewel in the crown of downtown Lake Worth Beach. Please support the rehabilitation project. Our beautiful historical site can become a centerpiece for hospitality and commerce. Please preserve this important site for our community and generations to come. Sherry Schmidt, Schmidt for Indigo Terrace. Good evening to everyone in attendance. My name is Sherry Schmidt, and my husband Fred Schmidt have been residents of Lake Worth Beach for over 10 years. We are both commercial real estate brokers and also own commercial warehouse office complexes here as well. In all the years we have been here and participated with the Financial Advisory Board of Directors, the Gulf Stream has sat vacant. We are extremely pleased that a developer is putting their money and talent into our city. It becomes a domino effect when new projects start and a boost to the morale of the city and all of us that call Lake Worth Beach our home. Congratulations to the city officials for your progressive work to increase our property values and reputation as a city. Thank you. Gail Silverblatt, 414 North Ocean Breeze. I'm very concerned about the proposed parking plans by staff for Gulfview Road. The parking illustrations show taking away green space, moving trees, and replacing with paved parking. This is a terrible idea. Parkland and green space is lacking in our city and should not be reduced. When the staff announced this was made for improvements to Bryant Park, no one thought it meant moving trees to add parking. Over the years, there have been many unsuccessful attempts to reduce the park green space and golf course footprint, and it should be evident by now that this is not acceptable to the residents. There are drainage issues all along Gulfview, and taking away permeable green space seems shortsighted in fixing the problem. The new parking plans require moving many oak trees and cabbage palms. The tree roots and canopies will need to be cut, and this seems like an expensive and invasive proposal. There is also the possibility of weakening the trees, making them less likely to survive high winds. Please reconsider this parking plan presented by staff. Bear with me while I take a sip of water.
Melissa.
Yes, sir.
City manager. Do you have any idea how many you've read so far?
No. But I'm on page 6 of 26.
Say that again?
I'm on page 6 of 26.
Okay. I may be sending staff down to help you read through those. Okay?
Okay.
Be alarmed if someone walks into the clerk's office. Because we got, we have a long way to go.
We do, but I'm good, okay. Anna Matart, 164 Bryant Brynmar Drive. Please save our Gulf Stream Hotel. I moved from West Palm Beach to Lake Worth in 2002. That one building was my pride and joy to look at and to be able to tell people about. I imagine people dressed up and the lights twinkling around it at night. Perfect for a very romantic, elegant, and entertaining evening out or a weekend honeymoon on the water and walking distance to the ocean. A something beachy lunch or brunch vibe during the daytime. Every time I go past it to this day, it still brings a comforting feeling that it's still there. It gives our city class. Something historical downtown to have our friends stay for vacation. It could be a place where we can go. That is the most special than any other in Lake Worth, I mean. Right across from the park by the water, how can you be, get better than that? Oh, yeah, and walk over the bridge to the ocean. It gives other people in different towns a reason to come and spend time and money on that end of our town to wine, shine, and dine with their significant other in an opulent setting or just have a drink at the bar. It also provides a wonderful night stroll in the park or a walk over the beach. We need to save our town's historical value for the generations to come. Historical architecture, in my opinion, should be saved everywhere in this town. There's only one like, like that in a prime location. Please save our hotel, thank you. Amber Blossman, 1603 North Lakeside Drive. Dear City of Lake Worth Beach, my name is Amber Blossman. I just purchased my first home and chose to do it in the city of Lake Worth. I'm a transplant from New Orleans by way of New York. I'm very much looking forward to starting this new chapter in my life, and I know this new project would add greatly to the neighborhood experience around my new home. This would provide a source of high-end nightlife to enjoy within biking distance. It would also be nice to have a quality hotel in the area for my own, for my out-of-town family members to stay when they visit. And some I would like to express my full support for the Gulf Stream Hotel. Sam Goodstein, 1717 South, 12th Avenue South Lot E4. To Marriott and the Gills, you are joining a community, and we welcome you with the expectation of you being a reasonable member, helping Lake Worth Beach retain its character. Further thoughts? Please let local groups use your meeting rooms for a free or a nominal fee when they are not otherwise booked. With respect to the parking plan, put in the 90-degree parking, maximize the use of space. If you take green space, try to find replacements and other landscaping. As to those parking lots, know that parades will some- As to those parking lots, know that parades will sometimes get in the way. With respect to safety improvements in Brian Park, I assume this means the unhoused. Please support respectful and humane solutions. And you're moving into a neighborhood that sometimes has loud festivals in Brian Park. With respect to the beach, I hope in addition to trying to get the restaurants to let guests charge to their room, you'll see if the Lake Worth T-shirt company would do the same. They supply a wide variety of beach games, gifts, and amenities. The only construction suggestion I have is to have electric charging parking spots, and I suggest that while the parking lot is dug up, installing the infrastructure for many more of them. Kate and Michael Schofeld Barnini, two-one-nine North Lakeside Drive. For over fifteen years, we have been looking at and living with broken-down cement railings, plywood-covered windows, and the building decay that has been the Gulfstream Hotel. For those of you who are citing architectural integrity concerns about the new Gulfstream Hotel, may we remind you there is a Dollar General across the street. Newsflash, the words "architectural integrity" and "Lake Worth Beach" are mutually exclusive. Please stop stalling and get going with this project or tear it down. Then there would be plenty of room for a family dollar and a Dollar Tree. Nistor Riviera, one-zero-two-seven South Palmway. I'm a resident on this beautiful city with amazing residents. I would like to see the Gulfstream Hotel running. Please support this project. Matthew Portia, thirteen oh-one Cochran Drive. Good day, commissioners. I urge all of you to approve the redevelopment of the Gulfstream Hotel. Our downtown is becoming a ghost town. Several businesses have shuttered, and the foot traffic on Lake Avenue and Lucerne has dwindled. These shuttered storefronts will soon lead to blight without the patrons. Commissioner McVoy's efforts to provide a setback to showcase the historic Gulfstream is a win for the community. Another win for the community would be tourists enjoying our downtown, shopping at something other than Dollar General, and enjoying our beaches. I'm sure the redeveloped site will have amenities like a pool that residents can access. Please don't miss this opportunity for the future of our city. Thank you. Dr. Scott Rice, fifteen South Gulfview Road, Unit five oh-three. Commissioners and Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns. My comments related to the development of the Gulfstream Hotel complex are as follows. One, population health challenge. There's a profound crucial need to evaluate, monitor, and track the impact of seismic activity related to hotel complex construction on the integrity of Gulfstream condominium buildings and surrounding structures. For example, the driving of piles into the ground and the repetitive movement of heavy construction machinery and vehicles can generate significant local seismic activity that may seriously damage surrounding structures over time, and is felt to have possibly or likely contributed to the Surfside Champlain Towers collapse. The proposed hotel complex is clearly quite large and will require multiple large piles for support, and the risk of seismic damage increases with the size and number of piles driven into the ground. Therefore, the pile requirement alone puts surrounding buildings at high risk for structural damage with the ongoing movement of heavy machines and vehicles over a prolonged period of time, simply adding to the risk of harm. The developers should be required to have expert consultants perform appropriate studies and assessments prior to construction, following construction, and as needed during construction. The developers should be held accountable and liable for any resulting harm and damages. I do not wish to see another Surfside-like event occur. Can we afford to assume this risk of harm to our neighborhood ecosystem? Perhaps as an expert in environmental sciences and soil sciences, Commissioner Dr. McVoy can address this potentially serious challenge. Furthermore, to maintain full transparency, the results of the hotel complex soil studies should be made readily available for inspection by the public. Two, public safety challenge. The alley between the Gulfstream condominiums and the hotel development property must be kept open, but hotel traffic should not be allowed. Time is up. Renee Hoyt, seventeen oh-two North J Terrace. While we have lived in the other parts of the country, Lake Worth has been our home for five years and is one of the friendliest places we have ever lived. We are excited to be raising our son in such a diverse and artsy community where his music has already been well-supported locally. We feel fortunate about the climate, the people we have met, and the way we see the town progressing. Hopefully, with the Gulfstream renovation project moving forward, we will see the promise of this community having the ability to attract even more like-minded individuals to keep the culture alive. Thank you for bringing this project to our city. Guy Ica- Icaangelo, one-four-nine Basser Drive. My wife Liz and I have lived here in Lake Worth Beach for twenty-four years, and we have seen the fits and starts of what some call progress towards a better Lake Worth. Rarely is there one project or idea that fixes all of the projects, sets things right, and makes everything better in any situation or in any location. This Gulfstream renewal project is not the one project that will fix all of what needs fixing in Lake Worth, but it's a darn good continuation of a lot of good work by a lot of good people over the last quarter of a century. Godspeed to those moving this new iteration of the Gulfstream along. Don't get in their way. Christine Olson, two-six-one-four Duke's Knee Lane. I support the Gulfstream project. Tom Ruth, five-one-eight North M. Lake Worth Beach has to highlight its strengths, downtown, Brian Park, golf course, and beach. The Gulfstream connects geographically with all these landmarks and has the perfect Bohemian South Florida vibe. Thriving spots, thriving businesses. Thriving spots equals thriving businesses. Thanks for your time and consideration. William A. Bullard, four-oh-one South Lakeside Drive Apartment Three. I ride by the Gulfstream Hotel on occasion and have noticed many rats scurrying in the rear of the building. Because this building has been vacant for so long, I'm sure the building is infested with rats. Once the building is opened up and construction begins, I'm sure the rats will be invading the neighborhood. What, if any, are the plans to control the invasion of these vermin? Thank you. Eli Cecil, eleven oh-five Second Avenue South. Will the developers enhance this project by incorporating local professional artists and designers to create visionary artwork to complement the interior and exterior of this landmark establishment? Peter Meyerhofer, three-two-three South Federal Highway, Unit Six. It is time for the Gulfstream Hotel to move forward and the city of Lake Worth Beach to gladly move forward with the project. The downtown business core will benefit from the hotel, especially after being hit by COVID. I can tell you, I am tired of walking by the old boarded-up building on my morning walks. It is adding nothing to the city, but a constant reminder that the city gets in its own way. Yes to the Gulfstream. Thank you. Janet Serrano, four-one-three North L Street. A huge thank you to the gills for being so responsive to community input. I cannot recall another developer being so open to local feedback. I urge the mayor, commissioners, and city staff to fully support and accommodate the Gulfstream renovation. It will be an economic boom to our downtown businesses and our city coffers. Andres Wallace, sixteen oh-three North Lakeside Drive. City of Lake Worth Beach, Mayor and Commissioners, I am a brand-new resident of the city and while I am on and while I am on any day of the week without a moment's hesitation, ready to lay my life down to end capitalism as we know it and start anew with almost any form of anarchy in the better interest of our future generations to live in closer harmony with nature. And while I would rather see wealthy out-of-town developers choke on their assets grossly inflated by public policy so distorted from the idealist lies we would teach our children in the civics classes not offered in our schools that they make a mockery of any reasonable idea of meritocracy. And while it disgusts me to think of the phony business dealings that may have been done here over written-off meals and drinks in order for capital to extract as much value out of labor as humanly possible until every man, woman, and child outside the ownership class reaches their breaking point, I do believe it behooves the citizens of Lake Worth Beach to have a swanking watering hole to wet their tender beaks in and a minty pillow for the guests of their fair city to rest their weary heads upon. I sincerely support the Gulfstream Hotel project. Wes Blackman, two-four-one Columbia Drive. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, staff, and of course to Amy and Amrit Gill of Restoration St. Louis. I first want to say that in all my years as a professional urban planner and longtime resident of the city, I've never witnessed a developer of a project be so engaged and willing to listen to the community's concerns. As a result, the original plan we saw last year is not the same, is not the same one. The Restoration St. Louis team gave their time and effort to address many issues and substantially altered the redevelopment program as a result. I've reviewed the backup for this evening's city commission work session on the Gulfstream Hotel. I appreciate the opportunity to offer comments. My biggest piece of advice is that it is time for the city to get out of its own way. Ideas identified here in the backup for tonight's meeting should be reviewed as part of the application review and approval process for the project. This is also known as the entitlement process. The city and the developer have already executed a letter of understanding. The city commission adopted it unanimously. The CRA has already pledged an incentive package for the redevelopment of the block. Finally, the residents approved a referendum in twenty twenty, which allowed height of new development on the block roughly equal to that of the historic hotel. The development team listened to the community and revised the proposed redevelopment plan based on the direction they received from residents and non-residents. Let's proceed with the application review process. This will start the clock towards the re-establishment of a legitimate hotel in our downtown. It is in a location that is central to Palm Beach County, which is worldwide tourist destination. This historic hotel and its associated redevelopment will provide employment and an economic engine that our downtown has needed for decades. We need to get on with preparing, submitting, and then reviewing the development application. There will be plenty of time for public input throughout the upcoming review process. Let me remind you that over eighty percent of voters approve the additional height in this block in order to save the Gulfstream Hotel. Nineteen twenties area hotels. Sam Winikoff, six-oh-two South Federal Highway, Unit Eight. Dear City Commission, thank you for providing this opportunity for me to express my utmost support for the Gulfstream Hotel project. The hotel will bring jobs and provide tourists with the chance enjoy our wonderful city. The current developers have taken a thoughtful approach to the project that truly embodies the spirit of Lake Worth Beach. We cannot let this opportunity to revitalize our city. We cannot let the Gulfstream sit vacant for another fifteen years. Thank you.
Melissa.
Yes, sir.
It's, uh, take a break for two seconds. Vice Mayor, if I may interject. Is it okay?
Yes.
Uh, consideration of their clerk's voice. And actually, and then it's a very positive in encouraging that we had so much public comment submitted. Now, obviously, a staff trying to plan, it's hard to determine the magnitude of the number of public comments, and I think, uh, clerk, at one point, we were at like a hundred and three public comments that were submitted.
That's correct.
But at two minutes, you know, we're looking at about, you know, close to eleven o'clock and strictly reading comments. So we have the ability, and my webmaster currently has created a webpage on our city website where all the public comments will be uploaded and can be read at anyone's leisure time. So I'm asking the commission, while I give the clerk a break, to consider as an option that we can end reading the public comment, have them all uploaded. I think we can have it all uploaded probably by within an hour, in ten minutes for sure, but within an hour. I've seen a template of what it would look like, and it has the name, address, the full comment, full transparent. So I just want to take a couple of seconds, maybe, uh, open the floor and get you guys' input. Obviously, we don't want to make anyone feel like we're trying to exclude them. It's actually the opposite. Uh, but again, uh, out of consideration of everyone's time, I'll just, uh, ask for some input really quick.
Um, I'll go first. My, I'm totally in favor of that, and I also think that it's better because sitting here listening to her read it, I'm, I'm hard, it's hard for us to even understand, and I think being able to see it, which we've never done before, which might be something we want to do in the future. Don't kill me, everybody. Um, but I think to be able to go back and reference and actually read the words is amazing versus having to sit here and listen to, what did she say? What did that mean? So I'm in favor of that. I mean, that makes sense to me, having a visual there.
And I can definitely have staff, uh, we can definitely have packets printed out for each of you of the elected body. Uh, for those that want to be paperless, we can create a link. Obviously, it'll be on the webpage. Everyone will have access to it. Um, and if you'd like a hard copy, obviously, for staff and for the gills, we'll want to go through the comments and kind of, you know, take the pieces, and again, there's questions and concerns or either, either side of the conversation, uh, and really study those. And then we can put some analytics behind it, you know, this many, you know, for, or, you know, turns or whatnot, you know, so we can, we can dive into that. Um, so, uh, again, Mr. McVoy, before I apologize for coming in there.
I, I, I think that's a quite reasonable idea. I think it's very nice to have them all written. Would we make some attempt to capture the ones that were done verbally at the very beginning?
We'll capture all of them. Every public comment, uh, that was submitted online, uh, will be posted. Those that were verbalized on Zoom, it's recorded. So there's a record of that, and along with the ones that were read off the comment cards are captured, you know, and recorded as well. Uh, we might be able to go back and transcribe them. Uh, I don't want the clerk to jump to the screen, but, uh, that might be what you might have been referring to.
I mean, the idea of being able to see everybody's written. I know that transcribing is not a lot of fun.
Right.
Um, so maybe at least a summary of, you know, that they were in favor or.
I, I most definitely, clerk, I think we can work through that and create a, my staff's waving.
You have a comment from?
That's, that's the beauty of YouTube. It automatically transcribes. Thank you.
We, we, we might want to check some of those transcriptions.
I think we had ten people live and how many?
It's not that many.
Yeah, and it, and those live people are transcribed because the whole meeting is transcribed, so there'll be a written record of all the comments that were said. We'll add them to the list. Yeah, so it'll be a complete list of in-person, Zoom in-person, you know, Zoom person, and then the twenty-six pages that the clerk is reading through at this point.
Five comments.
Right.
So it doesn't have quite the same effect, but it, they're being able to read them all at once is.
Right. It's not taking anything away from listening to our clerk read it versus us just reading it. I actually think it's going to be better because like Juan said, we can go back and we can highlight things that we've heard, so we can make sure that we address those as time goes on.
So we have a consensus to, uh?
Well, I also want to allow, uh, Mr., you know, Amber and Amy who slowed down. Thank you again. Yeah, this is a team effort, right? It's not easy. Yeah.
Good, sir, Mayor. Very good. So if, uh, everybody, uh, my apologies for, uh, the COVID, uh, briefness or length of this, but, uh, it'll be on the internet and, uh, with that, uh, nobody's being, uh, shut out of comments. Uh, we appreciate all the.
Yeah, and as a reminder, if I may, Vice Mayor, uh, we're, staff's already working with the gills on coordinating a follow-up subsequent workshop with, if everything works out and we can get back to some normalcy once again, you know, we can have a more of an in-person workshop, you know, with no guarantees. We'll always put the public's health at the priority, uh, foremost, so.
Keep the momentum going on this project. Uh, this is, this is, I was going to say a baby step, but this is a big step. You know, the community has spoken. So with that, uh, would you like to say good night?
No, just thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, well, and, uh, happy anniversary. This is our gift to you.
Hang on.
Thank you.
And I also just want to say thank you to the hard-working staff. You guys have been on this tumultuous roller coaster.
All right. Oh, with that, um, I'm.
Comment. Um, because of this interesting way that we're doing it. If we could, I know we asked if we could summarize the live ones, but if we could get a summary of all of them, I don't know. We wanted to buy and conquer or something, but like how many, or how many, or even just like pull out, these are like the five major themes, like something so that to really let everybody know that we did it. We're not just saying, we're going to go and read that we actually dug in and did it. But I think some.
I think that's.
Yes, Commissioner, so, yeah, we'll, we'll run the analytics on all of the comments and, and do the highlight overview. We'll also do the statistics on, you know, I hate to say pro against, right? Uh, we'll just say.
Topics too.
And topics. So I know our, our staff can run analytics and create some, uh, feedback that will be helpful to kind of just understand what, what the comments are.
Very good. Um, thank you, everybody, for their, your comments. Um, we look forward to, uh, our next meeting together. And so.
And this, this year did not slow down the process, right? This was just.
Didn't slow down your.
Right. You're, you're, you've done your soil samples. You've been moving ahead. This is, none of this is delaying your work.
We. So. It is going to delay our submission. Because we want to take all these comments and then perhaps come back in four weeks. So it is going to delay in four weeks because there could be some alternative, uh, proposals we make. One of the things we heard loud and clear today from. One of the things we heard loud and clear today from a lot of people is that the fifty-five-foot setback is really not that necessary. Maybe there's a trade-off. Maybe we can move moving forward towards Lake and maybe step it down, uh, towards First Avenue, I guess.
Yes.
And, and, you know, so there could be some trade-offs that come out of this session today that we would want to present. You'll keep looking on our website because you'll see it there first. Um, but we would want to present that to the community. But I'd love to read all the comments first so that we know exactly, you know, where the trade-offs are. So, yes, it is going to delay by about four weeks, but I think that's probably an investment worth making.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yeah. And any guidance that you guys could give us, right, on your consensus on, you know, would be really helpful.
But in our next commission meeting, that'll work for me. I, I, I just, I risk, I. No, we can't. And that's why I was going to mention that the public, our conversations with the gills in public is, is important. I'm going to.
Vice Mayor, one last thing. Uh, my amazings, our amazing staff. Uh, the comments are already live on the website, so if you go to the city homepage. Yeah. There's a big. There's a big purple button that says click here for public comment. So the whole list of public comments were there, and then tomorrow, uh, our team will, will dive into the analytics of it. And we'll share that information, uh, as soon as we can do it. Um, and we'll post those results online as well, along with the backup and the presentations. Um, so on the city website, along with the Gulfstream Hotel's website, all the information will be shared through its own multiple platforms.
All right. Um, this was a very productive meeting, and, uh, I'm going to adjourn.
Thank you.